To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and Members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission of Regular Session at this 22nd day of July 2024, resolution to reference making appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations of Hawkins County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025. Whereas Section 5-9-109 Tennessee Code Annotated, operating county legislative bodies to make appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations. Whereas the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners recognizes that various nonprofit or charitable organizations located in Hawkins County have great need of funds to carry on their nonprofit charitable work. Whereas funds shall herein be appropriated to promote the general and public welfare and to protect the systems of Hawkins County, and therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Hawkins County on this 22nd day of July 2024, appropriate funds as follows, and you see the attached listing. Be it further resolved that all appropriations enumerated in Sections 1 through 8 on the attached listing of contributions without contracts are subject to the following conditions: that the nonprofit charitable organization to which funds are appropriated shall file with the county mayor's office and county clerk a copy of an annual report of its business affairs and transactions, and the proposed use of the county's funds in accordance with the rules promulgated by the Comptroller of the Treasury. Such annual reports shall be prepared and certified by the chief financial officer of such nonprofit organization in accordance with TCA Section 5, 9109(c). That said, funds must only be used by the named nonprofit charitable organization in furtherance of their nonprofit charitable purposes benefiting the general welfare of the residents of the county. That it is the express interest of the County Commission of Hawkins County providing these funds to the nonprofit charitable organizations on the attached listing to be fully in compliance with the rules of Comptroller of the Treasury and Section 5, 9109 of Tennessee Code Annotated, and any and all other laws which may apply to county appropriations to nonprofit organizations. And so, this appropriation is made subject to compliance with any and all laws and regulations. It further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passes. Mr. Chairman, I salute you.
A motion on the floor from Commissioner Roach, Second Commissioner Gillum. Are there any questions? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Page 10C, Commissioner Barrett, go right ahead.
The questions I've got, the big four, Mr. Myrtle, your EMS there is looking for a $600,000 increase, and it looks like the budget committee is recommending $400,000. Your all's billing and stuff, Jason, your billing department, how often do you reevaluate your rates for your headsets on this?
The rates, we reevaluate our rates at least annually.
Okay. Do your departments, your office staff, they need collections for the bills?
We have a billing company that does our billing for us. So those payments are to that billing company, which goes into our account withdrawal.
Would you know by chance last year what you would have had outstanding in your billing department or collections?
I don't know that I have that number with me. To be honest with you, Mr. Barrett. I do not have the number of outstanding.
Would you know what's outstanding for the current year?
So, the way, I want to answer you truthfully and honestly, so when you're saying outstanding balance, you're talking about like our A off, correct?
Well, I guess, Jason, what I'm asking basically, what amount do you have that's been turned over to collections?
To collections?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so turned over to collections, you're looking for this year so far, right around 100, 100 and a point.
100 and a point, okay. Any idea about last year?
Last year, I would estimate roughly about double that. So roughly about 260%.
As a percentage, can you add here what your percentage rate of collections would currently be?
Roughly about 35%.
35%.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I have.
I want to clarify something. We didn't ask for a $600,000 increase, we asked for a $400,000 increase for a total of $600,000. Then we, the budget committee requested for people to try to make cuts, so we agreed that $400,000 was what we were requesting.
Commissioner Palmer.
Hey, Jason, real quick, I know you said 35% is your collection rate. How much do you actually get from reimbursement from Medicare?
From just Medicare?
It's less than half.
Yeah, it's roughly about 45, 47%.
How many of your calls do you go on, I'm sorry, what percentage of them are Medicare?
90.
So 90% of your calls are getting like 47% of what costs it takes to go on and call?
Yes.
Any other question?
No, I do want to speak on.
Mr. Bass.
I look at the bottom line from the Constitution, from Part 4 to the EMS, and 2023, 24, it was $390,000, $900,000 back. And now they're all there, they only have that $12,000 increase. Because 24, 25 years is recommended, and it's only $400, $12,000, $405,000. Is that about a $12,000 increase that they're getting?
All they're getting.
Total, not.
Total. Total, the whole thing. Just looking at the second through, on the page forward, is where he's at, I believe. I think that's the number he was saying.
Those are the ones with contracts, that would not include Part 4 or EMS. But correct, that's all they're getting.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote, please. Resolution carries. 2024-07-06, Commissioner Roach.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and Members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission of Regular Session at this 22nd day of July 2024, approval of appropriations for the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget. We resolve the attached resolution to be passed, making appropriations to the various funds of Hawkins County as per the attached budget documents. Mr. Chairman, I salute you.
A motion from Commissioner Roach, Second Commissioner Barker.
Mr. Chairman, before we go much further, at the budget meeting that I wasn't able to attend, there was an amendment that came out of the budget meeting that we probably need to go ahead and add back to. I don't know exactly, does anybody from the budget committee, would you be willing to use the language that you all adopted to make that amendment?
I wasn't able to. Are you talking about the maintenance?
No, there was apparently the maintenance department, $1820 to 28.
Like you made the motion out of.
So they were, we were two maintenance departments, we go to the 28 scale.
The mayor's office.
The mayor's office, or you might have amended this point.
Excuse me, there were three, there are three in the maintenance department, that includes Sarah Davis and Robert and Kim. They're all in the maintenance department, and that's what was included in the figure that you all.
That was in that 16,000. What was that new number, the last one you gave, I have just two, four?
The number that 16, whatever it was, the number you were presented with in the budget committee meeting.
I remember asking, how many members are in the maintenance department, and I was told two.
That's how many are in the maintenance department itself, but the original 28 version was 10 folks, pulled out of county budget and downed slide, bought the EMS up as two. The three remaining there are paid from county buildings line, would include the survey.
My motion for the maintenance department.
Just the two?
Yes.
You'd be less than. I don't have it figured with me what less could be, but.
If the motion I made was for, and it passed, you made it, so it was for two maintenance department members.
And it was, it was pretty obvious, I mean, it's pretty obvious that's what we thought, because that's the way it was painted, because Sarah Davis wasn't up front of the topic. Had two men in the draft going out on the weekends doing the topic.
Well, that's fine, I mean, it's your all's choice, they just, that's, the figure that we gave you was.
Well, it just seems like sometimes, it feels like we get hoodwinked sometimes. We're told one thing, and it makes us think one thing, and then it ends up being a whole another. And I don't appreciate that. If Ms. Davis needs a raise, we'll be glad to discuss that, but she, anyway, it just feels like that we're hoodwinked sometimes, and I don't appreciate it.
Commissioner Gunn, there was no hoodwinking going on, you all had the discussion at the budget committee meeting, you all voted on it, and that was it, there was no hoodwinking going on.
Well, I think everybody that was at the meeting would agree with me that nobody thought we were talking about giving Ms. Davis a raise, and this is no disrespect to her, I love Sarah Davis, she's a wonderful person, I talk to her a lot, she's great to work with, but she was not up there talking, it was the two guys that go out and do the grunt work, those were the two, because those were the two that would sell the best, and that's why they were put there in front, and she's included in it, and I just, that's how it feels, maybe that went near intentions, Mayor, and I apologize to you if it wasn't, but it certainly seemed like it.
Never, never my intention, Commissioner.
Well, he is attractive, right? We've got, let's see, we were there, weren't we? Were you at the button? Well, I know we're not on.
Okay, are we going to make the motion until then?
I'm on the board.
There's no discussion to be had until the motion is made.
I make the motion to amend the budget to include the two maintenance department members to the 28 scale.
Can everybody please pull their microphones down and talk?
And I was under the impression that that would be included in that budget, because we voted for it in the budget committee when we passed, when we moved to pass the budget for consideration.
Budgets are submitted to Ms. Davis, different to Ms. Davis before that happened, so.
And if any recommending body does, has to be recommended again in this body, full body.
My motion, Louie.
I'll say. Hey, we've got a motion and a second, Commissioner Palmer, Commissioner Gillum. Commissioner Tran, is your comment on the amendment, or is it on the resolution as a whole?
My comment is the same as Mr. Gillum's. I was there, I heard what was said, I'm as honest as I can be, and we thought it was the two gentlemen with the maintenance department, and I expressed the same sentiments that Mr. Gillum does. We've done, been done this way before, and I'm tired of it, and I'm going to start checking everything that you all tell us.
Commissioner Barrett, is your comment on the amendment?
Well, to respond to Mr. Palmer's question, Mr. Palmer, I was not present at the actual meeting, but I did feel like there was a need for recording to take, I said, I have, and from my perspective to take, I thought it was just the two guys that were sitting on the front row, that was my take, for those two people.
Okay, we can amend it to be those two people, no, that's not, any problem for me. Any other questions on the amendment? So can you restate your amendment for Ms. Davis?
My motion to place the two maintenance department members on the 28 scale.
Just a second, I have it in there.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the amendment. All right, that amendment is attached to the resolution, now we're going to go ahead and go back and vote on the resolution itself. Any further questions on it? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. All right, resolution passes. On to 2024-07-07, introduced by Commissioner Roach.
Mayor, let's back up here, I'm not much sure, I don't know what it's about, that on the budget, the contributions.
That's on the budget.
I won't change my vote.
I do too, I just can't, I won't change my vote.
I change mine also.
I just can't.
Change mine now.
Yeah, they do it before the meeting adjourns.
Okay. All right, so let them go ahead and change their vote.
Hold on a sec, I have an option to re-vote. Yes.
You want to revote?
I may, I have an option for that.
I'd rather, I'd rather they hold their vote, just stay that, do it like you're going to do it.
Okay, to be clear, in front of you you have 2024-07-06 as amended, a motion from Commissioner Roach, second from Commissioner Barker, let's go ahead and revote.
That is on the initial amendment to that resolution, right?
We've already voted on the amendment.
This is the whole budget.
The whole budget as amended.
Number six, resolution 2024-07-06.
Palmer, run.
7 yes, 7 no.
Do we have to go three times before I break a tie?
You have another month to think about. You still have another month to consider this budget.
We really, we really don't, the state needs our votes.
Yeah, you really do, last month you had two months, you just have another.
Okay, enough. Jackie, no disruptions from the audience, please, we're trying to do something up here.
Hope it will work.
Okay, technically, on a tie vote, the chairman is supposed to break the tie, but I'm going to call for a revote and see if we can get any closer to you all deciding. Motion from Commissioner Roach, second, Commissioner Barker.
I think, I don't want, we don't need to keep hacking this out, we've spent the last four months talking about this, so, I'm not trying to point anything, you voted no on the budget, let's settle this for now, what do you want to change, and let's, don't do like previous commissions have done, and just say, nope, I didn't vote on that budget, nope, we need to make cuts. If we're going to do it, let's talk about it and be done with it. I'd rather spend the next hour discussing this and talking about it than spending, dragging this out for a whole other month again, and then risking the state on a second failed vote to come in and set our own vote for us, because that's not going to be what this county needs.
We don't need a tax increase like this either.
Where do you want to make that up?
Commissioner Palmer.
I can sit here and not say any name, but every once in a while, about once a year, I like to have them say, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we're currently, as someone said last time, the national debt is 35 trillion, and Medicare and Social Security added debt is over 200 trillion, I've heard anywhere from 240 to up, our interest on that is 659 billion, it's unsustainable.
That's right.
The United States is headed for bankruptcy if we keep it up.
Yes.
I was here in 2018 when we were discussing the will tax or property tax, I spoke against the property tax. I'd rather have a $10 than property tax. The state mandates every year that we give our elected officials a raise, but they do not send us any money. Our elected official this year gets $5,000 raise, how many of you got $5,000? I did. I'm all for it if the state will send the money. And I understand it's in the budget, 5% county raise for all the county employees, is that right?
Correct. It's not a raise, it's a cost of living.
Cost of living, yes, sir.
If you want, there is a difference.
Air inflation in the last four years has been 20%, and I understand that everybody's buying, hiring down, and so is mine, but you're wanting to take more money out of my pocket, and a whole lot of it. We have lowered our debt in the six years I've been on the, I thought it was lowered from 90 million something to 58, is it 58 or 60, closer to 60, but we have lowered our debt. A county budget based on property tax alone is unsustainable. Sooner or later, in the audit review in the last month, there's 129 properties that are listed in foreclosure, pre-foreclosure. Year from now, probably be 500. I'd like to vote for a budget, and I know the sheriff's department needs a raise, EMS needs money, and on and on and on. But where do we find the debt? I'm not going to vote today, I'm not going to vote next month, or a month after that, for the property raise, property tax raise that we're putting on, thank you.
So I respect that, Commissioner Palmer, you know I respect you a whole lot.
Yes, sir.
Trouble is, we've got, we have to pass, we have to have a balanced budget, so you can balance it by cutting, and with what we have in front of us, really the biggest place you can cut is in the raises that we have proposed to the sheriff's office. You can cut some of the money that we're putting in the highway fund, but Mr. Buchanan can verify that if we don't put some money in that fund, it's going to end up in some real trouble. Those are really the two biggest portions of this increase. I'm sorry?
The hiring.
New hires.
Yeah, new hires.
That's a very good point, there are two new employees that, so this 23 cent tax increase, how much money does that equate to Eric Rambout? I can do it on my phone right quick.
Just a minute, I'll give that figure for it.
About 2.8 million?
Yep.
So 2.8 million dollar tax increase, now those two new employees probably are costing us, I'm just going to spitball it, it may be a little more or less than this, it's costing us about 60,000, we can cut those out, and you're, because they're cutting part-time money out to equate for some of those, those new employees. So, I, listen, we can have, if somebody wants to make a motion, take the employees out, we can debate it, that's, that's fine, but the point is, we take those two new employees out, you ain't, you ain't even done anything truthfully to make a difference in the tax increase. So, what I would like to hear, I guess, from the body tonight would be some ideas, as Commissioner Palmer said, if we need to make some cuts to what we're doing for the sheriff, I would like to hear what you have to say and how to approach it. That's all I have, Mr. Trevor, thank you.
Mr. Roach.
Well, we have worked on this budget for a while, and we did not give everybody everything that they asked for, but when I, when we started the budget process, the first day of the budget year, and I did a presentation, another one that I've done for some committees, to show that inflation is going up, it's unfortunately going up at rates that we never expected. Problem with that is, though, is that as a county government, we are victims of that inflation rate, we don't call it. Federal government, broken federal policies, just president, I shouldn't be political on my back of it, but the cost of doing business is going up. I would say, some of you out there own businesses, or you have farms where you sell hay, I remember selling a round roll of hay for $15, not 15, 20 years ago, and I guess it's probably running about 40 now for a round roll of hay. Cost goes up, so you have to adjust for costs. Now, the sheriff's department, it's not about giving them a raise that puts them light years ahead of our competitors, the only thing we're trying to do with the sheriff's department is to make them competitive. You have young deputies, you have young jailers that are leaving the sheriff's office to go work in Walmart, McDonald's, some of these other places where it's a whole lot less stress, and sometimes about the same amount of money. And we were asked earlier, what are we doing that's different than previous commission? The problem is, that while we have continued, and I hate this metaphor, we say it all the time, we've continued to kick the can down the road so long that it's catching up to us to the point where we cannot staff the sheriff's office. How many applications are you taking right now, Sheriff?
I did this week, I've lost two patrol officers this week, so I'm down four on the road, I'm down four in jail, I've got four on my duty, two out in surgery.
You're taking, you got two.
I'm in the SRO, I'm down one in court, it's going to cause the loss of services if I don't get these positions filled. I know it don't mean a lot, somebody, if you call, who sent somebody to, it's jeopardizing safety, my, with the officers, the inmates, and all the public, and so I'm just going back to the school, because I will have to reach eight of the 16 schools unprotected.
Thank you, Sheriff. So, what I tried to tell everyone going in is, as an independent commissioner, I didn't vote for every increase that was in this budget. The one thing that I don't want to do is continue to pass a budget that has higher expenditures, and we're not adjusting revenues, and we're going to rob our fund balance until three, four, five, six, or seven years down the road, we got 2017 again, that's the problem that I have. The challenge that I gave to the commission, the budget committee was, do not vote for spending if you're not willing to stand up to the plate and adjust revenue, that's the bottom line, because I don't want, I'm not interested in, and by the way, to correct some, we are not going in debt to balance this budget, that is not part of the formula at all. What we're going to do is project to use a couple million out of our fund balance, we won't, at the end of the day, it's going to come back, it's going to be clean, we hopefully will break even, because we expect our expenditures to be high and our revenues to be low, but at the end of the day, as a conservative, we cannot spend money we do not have, and if we continue to add expenditures and we don't adjust revenues, then if you think a 23 cent tax increase or 24 is high, a few years down the road, it's going to be worse, and we're all going to have to step up to the plate. I'll finish by saying this, I didn't vote for everything in the budget, but I'm not going to pass a budget that's going to rob our fund balance to the point where years down the road, we're going to have to make some emergency changes. Secondly, this budget is going to cost us something, it's going to cost us in revenue for proper tax increases, or it's going to cost us in services, that's the bottom line. I'm going to tell you, one of the, one of the least conservative decisions that we made with this budget, and we made it because I'm part of that committee, was we tried to create a fund, and we did. to create a fund, and we did, it's just going to have a smaller amount of money go into it, to pay for highway capital projects. We did that because in the future, we know we have other infrastructure problems aside from Ocean Valley that's going to come up that we need to pay for. And I don't know about you all, but I don't think we need to sit around and twill our thumbs away on federal government to come and ring in like Superman and bring us all kinds of money. Secondly, I don't know that we should sit around and, and wait to take a bond and take a loan out to fix these bridges and other infrastructure problems we've got. We're going to try to put some money back so we can have capital projects fund to pull from as infrastructure charter currently. We pulled most of that out in order to decrease the tax rate. So, this budget will cost you something. It's going to cost you in services or it's going to cost you in taxes. Now, I'm going to tell you with everything that I've got, that as your budget chair, I've labored over this budget, I've done my best, I've, I've tried to encourage cuts, I've tried to encourage folks to make sure they're being wise about their votes, but this is what all these months of work has come to. And I will say, I'm voting in favor of the budget. It's not the perfect budget. I don't approve, I didn't vote for everything in it. But I'm going to tell you, those, those, I'm, I'm tired of seeing our deputies working two or three jobs to try to make ends meet when they go out and wear firearms and fight the worst of our society. I'm tired of watching our jailers go, and they will inevitably, Mr. Gillum said one time, that a police officer might run into a bad guy on the street, but a jailer will inevitably run into a bad guy, and he ain't got a gun to protect him. I'm tired of seeing them go to work and then have to come home and worry about what they're going to leave off the grocery list, feed their children when they're coming and trying to do the best they can to manage their jail. So, with all that said, this is, you all asked us to do the best we could. This is the best that I can do. And I'm telling you, uh, you know, I, I, I don't like a property tax increase as much as anybody, but I also don't want to bank on paying for our expenditures out of our savings account because you do that so many times, savings account's no longer there. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gill, you're back on the board, you want to speak?
Yeah, I wanted to say, uh, a couple of things. I believe it was the last gentleman who spoke, your, Mr. Linkus, I get, there's another Mr. Linkus. Anyway, uh, you mentioned why didn't we fix the bridge back in twenty-seventeen? So, if you remember back in twenty-seventeen, I believe that's the year they were going through the will tax debate, right? And the reason they were going through that will tax debate, they wanted to pay one-point-five dollars, it cost seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand or a million dollars to fix that bridge, they didn't have it. Do you know why they didn't have it? Because they didn't raise revenues to match their spending over the years, and they depleted their savings until they were in crisis mode and they had no money left. They had zero, so they had to do something, right? What we're, what we're doing, we could also do that. We could sit here and not raise our taxes, and we could, uh, uh, pull from fund balance, there's, there's a decent amount in there. We could do that. And then eventually, somewhere here in the next few years, we would hit a crisis again, and, uh, I could grandstand and sit back and say, boy, look at those guys, they're raising taxes, they're not conservative. But I, I all along was, was voting to not match revenues to expenditures, right? So that's, that's what we're trying to do, is pay for the spending we're passing. Now, I, we can talk about what spending to cut, that's what it comes down to. If we don't want to pay officers as much as the sheriff has put forth, and we debated and cut back and baited and kicked back forth, we don't want to pay them that much, what do we want to pay them? And what's it going to cost? It comes down to, you can be, you can't be for paying the officers more money and not raising taxes, because if you pay them any more taxes, any more, any more than you have been paying them, you're going to have to raise taxes. That's the bottom line. Is that correct? Would you agree with that, Mr. Chairman, or Budget Chair Roach? Chairman Roach, Vice Chair Barker, and the committee, we've worked through this tirelessly, man, I mean, it's, it's been crazy. And that's, it's fine that, that we can't get it passed tonight. I respect this commission, all of you are my friends, uh, but we've got to have some solutions from some folks that are not on the committee. I'd like to hear that.
Mr. Palmer.
Josh, you, you said the same thing I would want to say. I would want to address that too, Mr. Linkus said, why didn't we fix a bridge many years ago? Well, we could sit here and, you know, just like you said, we could do the same thing. We could kick this can on further down the road. Well, then the next four years, we'll all have the same problem of even bigger deficit and even bigger, um, ask from the citizens. So, I don't like it either. You know, this, we're not immune to the tax increase, and it's going to hurt. We all knew this going in, that because of the state taking away, Mr. Roach, was it two-point-one million dollars?
When, in twenty-twenty-two, about fifteen cents, is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Yes. Well, it, it generated about one-point-eight and we, about one-point-six of the paper.
So the state comes in, and I know we have a federal representative, or a state representative candidate in here now, um, we have the state come in that's really good at taking money away from us, but they're not really good at giving us anything back to help. Well, who pays the bill? You guys. We do. Every single one of us. If the state would have gave us something, said, hey, we're making the decision to give tax breaks to our businesses, we know this is going to hurt you, and Hawkins County is an at-risk county, we know it's going to hurt, but we're going to help you out a little bit. A little is better than nothing, and that's what we have to deal with. So, I sit, you know, I sat here and I watched the commission, my dad served on it. And I'm not calling out names, because there are some people still on this commission, but I respect those people, and I think they are very smart at what they do. We sit here and we watch the well keep getting pulled from without anything going back into it. Well, what position did that get us? They had to do a will tax increase. We have people that don't want to do the same thing, but they don't want to spend the money and make the decision to adjust the revenue. So, again, I ask, if you voted no on this budget, and many people that voted no on this budget sat in on these budget hearings, I have to bend in two thousand, between two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and eighteen commission. If you're going to say we need to make cuts, no to the tax increase, then come with an actual answer, an explanation on how to fix that.
I got one for you.
Are you done, Commissioner Palmer?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent.
This is just a suggestion. Why do we not vote on the Sheriff's Department budget separately from the rest of the budget? We know we won't have to raise taxes to some extent in order to cover their proposed budget. We can change some things in the rest of the budget, we know that, we know that. Sometimes we're apprehensive about pointing things out because maybe so-and-so's sitting right here beside of, you know, you don't want to make them mad, or so-and-so's daughter works so-and-so, you don't want to make them mad, they've got to get a raise. You know, I'm tired of this, my buddy, my buddy, my family, this and that, my family, the Sheriff's Department, I voted against the budget. I tell you, people, we've got to get away from this buddy stuff and family stuff. Vote for the Sheriff's Department budget, take this other one back. I've been to most of those meetings, I know what goes on, and I've been doing this more than, longer than any of you all. Well, there's two of you longer than me. But we do need to do something, and we are going to have to have some type of tax increase. Mine alone will go up for five-hundred dollars just for, just, well, you don't care what mine is, but just for one piece of property that I've worked fifty-five years for. So, I'm just recommending that we vote on the Sheriff's Budget, then go back to the drawing board and work on this other one and take some more things out.
Ms. Trent, with all due respect, the budget has to pass or fail as a whole.
Well, I think we voted on it before we voted on the number separately.
I don't think so.
But you know everything, so that's okay.
I'm paid to know something.
I know it, and I'm paid to, fifty, a hundred dollars with me. And I went to college just like you did.
Commissioner Davis.
I'm going to be honest with you all. When I walked in here in Atlanta, I thought I was going to vote no on this budget. I worked for the Sheriff's Department for thirty years, and yes, I have friends here that were like my own children. And I saw two of my children die. We worked for nothing. My first year working for the Sheriff's Department thirty years ago, I made six-thousand dollars. I worked hay, I handed, went home from a graveyard shift and handed to backup to get my son a bicycle for Christmas. I know what these boys are going through. If we want the service, we're going to have to do something. I'm not for this because I live in the city. The city's tax rate has gone up to thirty-five cents. So you add up what I'm going to be paying. It's not right for these boys to go out here and put their lives on the line and not, their families not having anything to show for them. When I get up in the morning during my devotional, I pray for these kids, and we're already not a kid anymore. But I pray for them all, for that they'll be able to come home safe to their families. We need to do something, somebody needs to do something. And I don't know what the answer is, I don't have the answer. But wait till one of, another one of our boys die, and you, how much is a life worth? And do you want the, do you want, when you're in trouble, do you want somebody to be there on time, or somebody doing another job if they can't get there and you end up dead? Think about it. We need law enforcement, we need EMS, we need it all. And I know these people that I don't talk much because my daddy a long time ago told me, you've got two ears and a mouth, keep your mouth closed and listen, and you'll learn a lot more. But I'm here to tell you, the reason I voted yes is not because I want to pay more taxes, it's because I love these kids. With all my heart, I love them. They've been there, and they've always been there, and I've tried to help take care of them. And just, you know, folks, it's hard. But that's why I'm telling you I changed my mind and voted yes.
Can I make a quick point for the commission?
Yes, sir.
Everybody wants to pay the sheriff's employees in the EMS, and that does not make up a twenty-eight million-dollar budget. You've got over a dozen line items in this budget that are a million dollars or more, and at least a score of them that are half a million. We all keep giving pigeonholes into this one thing or this one other thing, and those don't move the needle. A bunch of them will help a little bit, but when you're trying to fix something like this, you start at your biggest number, find out where that one is going, and is it being used appropriately? You need to look at your two, three, four, six million dollars, all of your six-eight, six-hundred thousand, eight-hundred thousand, nine-hundred thousand, or is that one being used efficiently? I have a sneaking suspicion it's not.
Mr. Gill, if you look back over the years and look at how many of those years was the budget overspent back then? And what happened to all the extra tax dollars coming in, like, if they're going home, they're Cokes, you know where Cokes is, there in the chicken farm? How many double buys could they buy and put in, if they're holding a quarter, half-acre lots? Sold those things for two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred thousand dollars. And they build houses in this town, these people move in here, where's all that extra tax dollars? And if, if you seen something for your tax dollars, like some better roads, some better school, anything, it would make it a whole lot bit easier to swallow. But my road has not been paved in twenty-some years. I mean, it's better.
I agree with what you're saying. And we have the property assessor here, and he, he does do his job, he is keeping up the, the new dwellings and, uh, it's, it'll take a couple, three years for it to start showing up.
All right, Mr. Breckin.
I'm waiting, Mr. Mark.
You weren't on the board, Commissioner Alvis. Mr. Breckin, why, if you want to speak, hit your button.
That, that's kind of what the line I was going to bring up, and I was going to put Mr. Gillespie on the block. I understand the ratio, but I don't know that I understand it well enough to explain it to everybody else. So Mike, if it's okay, would you mind explaining the ratio and how that works?
The ratio is the percentage we're off of current market. You can help me tell this, Eric, uh, which, uh, your personal property gets assessed every year. Other than like your, uh, like your home and everything, it's, we're on a five-year reappraisal. So, right now, you're still on twenty-one's tax rate or value. In the last ratio we did, per market value, we were twenty-nine, almost thirty percent under value to market.
I don't know how, when you had the national.
The last ratio was about thirty-something percent, so we were at sixty-nine, and that's what washed out the fifteen-cent tax increase was, we had about a one-point-seven, one-point-eight million dollars lost in the ratio due to the statement we had to take to handle it in the property for the residential, and it was five years.
National reassessed every time up here. You went up forty, fifty thousand dollars on the set.
In twenty-one for Hawkins County.
Yeah. I mean, where's, now you's going to go up, where's all that?
The, the increase won't come until twenty-six.
But you, you all. I'm faded in the grease.
The value, the value of your property will go up. You, you've seen it, and if you've been watching Sullivan County, Washington County, Green County, I think their value will up fifty percent, but that brings in a certified tax rate.
I know I've paid higher taxes the last two, three years.
Mr. Breckin was out, you had?
That's all I.
Commissioner Alvis, did you want to speak? You're not on the board, but would you like to speak more?
Yeah, I think I will, Mark.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, yes, sir, I think I will.
Okay.
I make a motion to remove the two new hirees. It won't help tremendously, but it'll, it'll save a hundred-and-twenty-five, seven-hundred thousand dollars. It's a start. And with that said, I make a motion to remove the two new hirees out of the budget, Mayor.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Alvis. They're working on the system over here. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, second. Commissioner Gill, second. Okay, we, we're going to have to discuss it anyway, right? So, is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Palmer.
Eric, can you verify that number, a hundred-and-twenty, a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, just so we all?
I think that number's a little exaggerated. Myself, I'm turning in thirty thousand dollars of part-time money to help self-fund at the best of my ability, and I know Director Merle, or she's Miller, uh, is also turning money over with at sixteen thousand, so he's trying to do his best to help self-fund that as well as, soften the blow as much as possible.
So what would be, I know we discussed this in the budget meeting, what would be the, what would be the difference? Do you have that?
I do, I have it in one of these sheets here, if you'll bear with me, I'll dig it out.
What would the starting salary be up here? Help, Eric, if I'm talking about the tax rates.
Bear with me, I'm pulling two different sheets at the same time, Mr. Alvis.
No, it's separate.
The savings for mine would be more at twenty-eight thousand, five-thirty-five, and the starting salary, now back on the eighteen-twenty scale, would be forty-six thousand, four-sixty-seven.
Plus benefits and insurance.
Correct. Benefits and insurance are calculated into the total under twenty-eight thousand savings, because again, self-funding at thirty thousand.
So it would be a nineteen, it'd be twenty, eighteen thousand dollar increase after you turn money back in? Be an eighteen to twenty, eighteen to nineteen thousand dollar increase?
The increase would be twenty-eight thousand, that'd be the savings if it comes back.
I know, but you put in twenty-eight, or you're putting, or the?
Thirty, yes.
So within the new position of forty-six.
It's all calculated here on the sheet with all the benefits included in it. I'll calculate it here on the sheet with all the benefits included in it, it's about twenty-eight thousand savings.
Mr. Miller, you want to speak to yours?
I'll speak, Governor. I'll go over some of this, fill up a broken record on some of this, we went over it so much, but over the past several years, my apartment's processed about four million dollars worth of grant money. I feel very confident that the general fund would not look as healthy as it does had that not happened. We still have such an opportunity that I'd love to be able to process, but I don't know if people do it. Another huge lead in my department is when, when I'm absent and my one part-time is not available. Large incidents have happened through the last few years, there's a large chemical fire, an evacuation, a large search operation in Beach Grove, a potential shooter at Palmetiere Hospital, districts with Swift Water, Benetton, we called in resources from all over the region, in the big groups. An evacuation in Hittertown of a hundred people or a hundred residents. And Allen Skilby Fire evacuated a motel. My question is, who do you want me to call if I'm not available in my part-time?
What about the fire chiefs that come in?
We, we worked in coordination with the fire chief. For example, the Allen Skilby Fire, the fire chief was busy with the fire operation. Once we saw he was pinging on the hotel, it obviously then evacuated. We didn't have any fire personnel sent, I personally went myself hitting every door, every window, jerking every alarm in that building, myself. That, that's not our sole duty. We, we also called in the resources. While these are cloud, efforts with every department in the county, but we, we're there as a resource to help with that. And another thing, we've been, been asked to expand our digital rating system. We're at five hundred devices down the field, they'll take us to nearly a thousand. There's a whole lot of work that goes into keeping those devices online and working correctly. Obviously, if we move forward with that problem, we've got to, we've got to increase our manpower somehow. I'm hoping that eight other suggestions are.
And how much part-time money are you turning in?
Sixteen thousand.
How much is, so what would be the difference?
It's, it's pace scale nine, Eric, just like your work, pace scale nine.
Be in the range of forty thousand, four twenty-five to forty-five thousand, four thirty-two.
And we started asking for the complete position and negotiated with, with budget meeting until this point. I'll answer any questions anyone has, or any suggestions.
Is that the forty font of the total salary, or is that what we would contribute in this month to that?
That was step one, that's all.
That's salary.
Salary, just salary.
So it'd be sixteen thousand.
Yeah, minus is sixteen. Anything else, Mark? Mr. Miller.
Does that include a vehicle, James?
Well, we've just recently replaced that flatbed with a, with a vehicle that would, would be our second vehicle online. So there'd be no additional cost to this budget to that. We were able to do that in the last budget, that was another thing we negotiated for the budget.
So Eric, are we looking to throw it roughly less than sixty thousand for ten positions?
Correct.
Commissioner Gill.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So total qual, total cost is about six grand, right, give or take?
Give or take.
Is that right? All right. Well, I, I just want to say, you know, Commissioner Allen's made the same motion in the budget meeting the other day, and I didn't second it. I anticipated we'd pass the budget as it was, since, since we didn't pass it. We've got to do something, guys, we can't sit here and say whatever. So that's why I seconded the motion, let's debate it. We, we've got to cut something. I appreciate Commissioner Allen's coming up with, with something, get the ball rolling, but if you have other ideas, we've worked through this, bring them up, because we, we've got to pass the motion.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor to remove the two positions.
Another thing I'd like to bring up that a lot of people don't know that happens, we recently went through a suit of a million dollars due to the, due to the late response. It was from several years back. When you have an agency in the county that will probably have been complaining on that suit. So a lot of times we're stretched thin, can't be wide on all departments.
Okay, real quick, sir.
I'd be split, just hire one, or that's not different?
Two different functions, two total again.
What are the doubts about two?
The other one's accounting the budget.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote.
To remove the position?
Removing the two positions, yes. Yes is to remove the two positions, no is to keep them in the budget.
Nine yes, four no, one abstain.
Does that? Okay, that passed, the, the motion passes.
Just to let you know I can go home and sleep at night that I'm writing, so that's all I can do, didn't have to deal with this.
I can too.
Okay. So the motion, the, the budget's gonna be, part-time money will go back to where the part-time money was. And will be pulled back away from the full-time position, back to the part-time position.
So, Eric, before we move on to the progress, that's fifty-seven, I came up with about fifty-seven, five thirty-five, which would be about one-four-seven of a penny, is that correct? Can you do that math for me? One-four-seven?
You use fifty-seven thousand?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, when I confirm, one-four-seven.
And now the tax rate is forty-three?
Well, that's, well, it's not, yeah.
But propose, right now.
Remember, we decided not to move the tax rate when we put the maintenance people on twenty-eight. So this is gonna kind of counteract that, and it's not gonna make a big.
Yeah, give it twenty-three cents, right now, propose.
No, because you've added some. Ma'am.
You stated that you had a MOE for the adjusted cost of living at five percent. Is that the highest you do, or is there any lower than five percent?
So, we did have a discussion, and three years ago, when we did salary scale adjustments for COLA, we aimed to marry that to the social security increase, which is, you have your consumer price index for quarter three compared to your consumer price index for quarter three the next year, whatever the difference is, it's what you're supposed to get. Social Security, right now, is supposed to get a three point two percent. We, we proposed a three point two percent COLA in budget, in the committee, and it failed, it stayed at five.
Can we revisit that?
Do you mind, Mr. Trump?
Would it be possible to have a recess, Mr. Chairman?
We were still discussing ways to reduce the budget as far as, no?
So we've passed in that so far.
Okay. And the two amendments are?
They are to take, to take the maintenance department to a twenty-eight per hour,
Twenty-eight hours.
Hour salary scale to employees, and that was that budget, and, and it passed. And then to remove the new hiring from the accounting and bookkeeping department and the emergency management department, and that passed.
Okay. All right, so we're back to talking about the budget as a whole, twenty twenty-four oh seven oh six.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I did this before, and I want to do it again because I think it's something we need to at least discuss. So I moved to amend by withdrawing five percent COLA and adding a three point two percent COLA for county employees.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to take the five percent COLA to the three point two percent. There's a second.
I'll second it for discussion. I think some of these folks that voted against the budget need to start seconding, making, making the motion. And I'll second it so we can discuss.
Mr. Chairman, I, since it's on the floor now, I asked Mr. Buchanan to give me a figure of how much it would save us. It looks like a savings of around seventy-seven thousand to go from five to three point two, which once again is what we married to years ago, when we said we were going to make salary scale adjustments, that we would marry it to social security. With that seventy-seven thousand, what I'm also seeing, when we pull, pull those two new employees out, that was a total of fifty-seven. So that would, that would decrease the budget by a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars, which is roughly point zero one one pennies. So, you know, these are some of the suggestions we had made before, and I think, you know, that, that helps, so, with that saved.
Okay, Commissioner Barker.
Well, my only objection is the, the employees that we're suggesting to cut their rate, the COLA raise two percent, they, they just, they've got the hardship that everybody else has got. And we keep saying we're marrying this to the COLA, when it was eight point four, we didn't give them an eight point four, we only gave them a four percent. So I don't think that this is a good idea to take back something. These people have the same grocery bills, the same, all the other bills that everybody else has. And none of these elected officials' offices, not a one of, ask for any kind of increase, except to take care of their employees. And we're taking care of the sheriff's department, and I don't have a problem with that at all. But these other people are making probably barely over minimum wage. So I don't think that we should take back the five percent that we've allotted for them. And if we're gonna marry it to the COLA, let's go back and give them the four percent we didn't give them two years ago.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, so the motion on the floor is to, to reduce the five percent COLA to three point two percent?
Jim, Mr. Shank saying something?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was trying to distract attention. If we're gonna keep it with social security, that's fine. And we did not ask for an increase for our employees because we knew what he had planned. And we all pretty much, I, I'm speaking for my office. Pretty much agreed that was more important than, than anything we would ask for. I can't speak for Mr. Gillespie, I did talk to Randy Collier, he called me just a minute ago. Mr. Collier did point out that our, we had several line, line items cut at a budget committee by fifteen percent. None of us were notified, I think except for Ms. Davis, but me, and I was off week four at the time. So we weren't there, we got the cut, and I told several people, I'm fine with that cut, as long as the employees, and I'm sure that, I don't know, Eric's a budget guy, but I'm assuming that helped cover the cost of the one point eight percent that would be the difference. I don't know exactly. And I'm not telling you, you have to figure it out, Eric, it's no big deal, you've done enough math this year for five people. But we would really appreciate you considering, like I said, we cut our budgets, and if you turn back, I know Ms. Ms. Simons was here, I think Daddy was here, Glenda was here. Five or six years ago, y'all asked us to shave our budgets to bear buttons, and we did. And I didn't move mine back up, other than things that were out of our control. Salaries, software, I cut my capital out late. I've cut since two thousand and four, sixteen thousand dollars out of my part-time employees. I mean, we try, we're doing our part, I mean, I don't know what else we can do. Mr. Collier also wanted me to let you know he, he was tired at the time. He, he's willing to go forego, forego the fifteen percent that was, that was taken from him, but he really wants you to know that the employees kind of already have that carrot dangle in front of their face. So, you know, it's no big deal, I'm not gonna pick an argument with anybody, but we would really like for you to reconsider that. Thank you.
Mr. Trent.
Thank you. Mr. Shank, what's the lowest paid salary in your office?
Mr. Buchanan?
Your lowest grade employees are salary grade sevens.
Have they, I have one that is at nine years, and everybody else is ten years or more.
So what's the lowest salary?
We're looking at, there.
I don't have those folks affirming, so assuming that that is correct, if they're a step nine and a step ten, it would be forty thousand, six eighty-two, and forty-one thousand, nine fifty-five.
Thank you, I thought it was a little more than minimum wage.
As I believe Commissioner Rugg's pointed out, was your point that that's barely moving the needle at all?
Well, no, that's a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars, we remit, well, assuming this passes, will decrease, let me say that again, could decrease the tax rate by one penny. Well, actually, point zero one one, so one and one tenth of a, of a penny. So you're looking at going from two, pardon, two five five nine three per assessed, one hundred dollars of value, to two five four eight three, if we choose to drop the tax rate when we get to the tax rate department, we're not that yet.
So, we're keep picking around the edges and it keeps getting dropped on the bottom people. I don't know if it's too late for this, but it seems like in the situation we're in, where would we start? Two percent or a five percent or a ten percent cut to every department across the board?
Well, sir, we, and without, and I, I love the idea, I wish we could, unfortunately, we do have state mandated laws, we have main, we have maintenance of effort, but we can't just do a piecemeal ten percent cut across the board, I mean.
That'd be a great place to start from, but again, we're, we're all tied up in all these little things. But you go through the budget, it's, it's the big ticket line items where twenty-eight million's coming from.
Two, two point eight.
The total budget of the?
The total, the total budget, the total operating budget for Hopkins County is about a hundred and twenty-two million. But we're looking at the increase in expenditure, it's, it's quite a small amount.
Yeah, but it's those big line items where, and it's kind of late in the game for that, but that's, that's where.
We, thankfully, Mr. Chairman, I, I'll, we, we have pulled a little more than a penny out, so that's, that is something, a penny is a penny.
If the state came in and done cuts, where would be the first place they'd look at?
I don't know.
Nonprofits, including all the volunteer fire departments?
Well, excluding the volunteer fire department, because we all understand that they save us over five point five million dollars on a yearly basis with the hard work that they do. But there's other contributions out there, and they're small amounts, but they add up. And if the, you, you can cut a hundred thousand dollars there, there's another few. I ain't gonna tell you it's where, because I've already, I've already pointed out one that you can look at, and there's multiple other ones in there too. It's just a matter of just discussion and making the motions and voting.
Okay, we need to kind of stay on the motion that, that's on the floor. Other ideas can come after this, but we need to stay on this motion.
Mr. Chairman, I call a question on the agenda.
Okay. Question's been called, so let's vote. Yes is to reduce the cost of living allowance from five percent to three point two percent. No is to keep it as it is at five percent.
Seven yes, seven no.
So do I do the tiebreaker on that one, or do we vote again?
Would, would the motion fail, did, did it?
No, the mayor, the chairman can work the tie, or he can choose not to vote, and then everything.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna break the tie and say no, we're not going back to three point two, we're staying at five. Gives them a chance to get to. We have to move on.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So we've got twenty twenty-four oh seven oh six, which is the appropriations to the budget, that's been amended twice. Three times, and I think that's the limit, isn't it? Okay. So any other questions before we vote? So any other questions before we vote? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
We're voting on the budget as amended.
On the budget as amended three times.
Jason Allen.
Okay. All right. Motion from Commissioner Rhodes, second Commissioner Barker. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote. Vote, please. Vote.
Eight yes, six no.
All right. The budget passes as amended three times. Let's go on to Resolution 2024-07-07, which fixes the tax levy for the 2024-25 fiscal year.
Mr. Chairman, the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman, and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, this 22nd day of July 2024, resolution reference fixing the tax levy for the 2024-25 fiscal year. Being resolved, the attached resolution being considered fixing the tax levy at $2,5593 per $100 taxable property. Mr. Chairman, I'll salute.
Motion from Commissioner Rhodes, second Commissioner Barker. Discussion.
Eric, did you say it would be .47 based on what we took out? Corrective decision.
What's it doing in there? I think he's going to change it to 2.5546.
What is it, Eric? Tell me what you...
2.5546. They'd have to do that if that's what you choose to do. That's not what he's asking for.
All right, so 2.5546, which decreases about a half a penny.
And you're going to take that out of the general fund things or...
So those cannot not be amended yet. I'm just trying to think of how we do it. So if that money that we pulled out for those two positions would have been funded from the general fund, correct?
Yes.
So then that's 1,47 would then be pulled from the general fund allocation.
Okay.
So...
So it's 10702.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I move to amend to set the tax levy at 2.5546 with the difference coming from the general fund allocation.
Does that make the general fund 10702? Okay, so on your resolution in front of you, we're going to... The amendment is going to change that 25593 on the first page to 25546, and then on the second page, the general fund will reduce from 10749 to 10702. Okay. Is that a motion for an amendment, Commissioner Rhodes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
10742. Another amendment?
No, this is tax... This is tax levy. Commissioner Britton, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay.
Who seconded it?
Commissioner Britton. Commissioner Rhodes made the motion to amend. Commissioner Britton seconded it. Okay, any questions on that? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, just a quick statement on that top of your document there.
Yeah, we've already struck that out and changed it.
You're talking about in the paragraph?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's going to be now 2554... 2.5546 as well.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Just want to double check. I've got my numbers correct, so you need just a second.
I know that was brought up in a budget committee hearing last time, but it didn't change on the website document download.
Right. We kind of struck through that and amended it.
So just to make sure I have this correct, we're fixing the tax levy at 2.5546 per 100 taxable property.
Correct.
And we are changing the next page under general fund, general, that will be changed to 1.0742.
0702.
0702.
Right. And where it says section one in the third line, as she said, make sure that says instead of 2.6714, it's 2.5546. You see where I'm referring to?
Here?
No.
So how much is that going to be in increase?
2.5546.
Thank you.
And the bottom number where it's added up, you're right, it should also be 2.5546. Okay, motion on the floor to approve the tax levy.
We got to amend the part.
Yeah, we're going to vote on the amendment first, and the amendment is to drop that, was it like? .47 of a cent. Less than half a cent. So any questions? Any further questions on the amendment? All right, here and now, let's go ahead and vote for the amendment.
Fourteen yes.
All right, the amendment passes. Now we're back to the resolution as amended. I'm going to give them a chance to catch up. If there are any questions on the resolution as amended, now's the time to ask.
So just to clarify, that's 22.99 cent increase?
I'll have to have my calculator. I have to take my shoes off.
Me too.
Got that.
My calculator's doing video right now. That was Mr. Rhodes' laugh.
22.99 or 22.99 cents.
Okay, 22.9 cent increase. All right, we're going to vote on the resolution as amended. We've got a motion from Commissioner Rhodes, second Commissioner Barker. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Paul.
Just keep in mind, when we vote on this budget, there may be things in this budget we don't like, and there may be things in here we don't support and we do support. But unfortunately, this entire budget, even the things we don't support are included in this budget. So when the pictures get posted on Facebook and when this runs in the papers, be aware that whether we vote yes or no on this budget, there are parts of it we may not support. But unfortunately, we have to vote on this entire budget.
Keep in mind the motion's separate.
They don't know it. They don't know the difference on the budget.
Okay, any other questions? We're going to vote on the tax levy as amended. Let's go ahead and vote.
Nine yes, five no.
All right, resolution passes. On to 2024-07-08, Commissioner Gibson.
Motion of the House, the number of Republicans presenting.
A motion from Commissioner Gibson to approve the notary, second Commissioner Gill. Any questions or comments? Let's go ahead and vote, please. All right, that resolution carries most in turn from Commissioner Barker, second Commissioner Gibson. Please, everybody, go ahead and vote. Out.